Here at the county auditorium, and now I'm going to turn it over to our co-chairman. Mr. Pope, you will?
I would like to invite members of our local Veterans Council to come forward to lead us in our pledge of allegiance and our prayer. They would all rise.
(inaudible)
Yes.
(inaudible)
Yes, Lord.
Let us be respectful, we're good listeners, and as well as speak, listen to each other, and just communicate with each other in love, Lord, as you command it. Lord, I ask you to bless each and every one of us here, I ask you to bless this county and the United States. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
(inaudible). Presenting, President Ford. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order of arms.
Thank you.
Before I ask for a motion to approve the agenda, we have one walk on. Mr. Jim Johnson is going to discuss the 2028 countywide revaluation during our public information. At this time, I'll accept a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, you make the motion. I'll second.
Easy enough. Motion to approve, all in favor? Motion so carries. All right, we're going to move right on into public information, and at this time, Foundation Forward, Ron Lewis, the podium is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, distinguished members of the board. I'm an old county manager, so I actually enjoy coming to these meetings to see how business is conducted across our great state. I have a brief video that'll introduce the charters of freedom to you, and honestly, it does a better job than I can do. So I'm going to ask your audiovisual expert to come and play a short video for you. (pause) (noise) 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 I'm going to, before I jump into my presentation, I want to brag on your county for just a second. I hear good things about your new manager. Our network statewide is relatively small, but I hear good things. But I want to tell you, the young man that preceded Allen, Jeff Hudson, was my protege for 10 years when I became the county manager of Onzeal County in 96, before we had eight hurricanes. Jeff Hudson was right out of college, and he was, he was green behind the ears, and he looked for an old manager that he could work under, and I was blessed to have him. Let me say, the first five years, I taught him traditional county government. In the second five years, he taught me innovative county government. So I know that you're blessed to have Allen, and you had another blessing because Jeff Hudson was here for a period of time. And, Mr. Chairman, that's my editorial comment for today.
Thank you.
But we propose, as Foundation Forward, to gift the charters of freedom to beautiful Sampson County. I drove in from the interstate today, and I passed beautiful cotton fields and what I thought were chicken houses, but after further investigation, they were hog houses. And that was just a beautiful drive from the interstate over to, to your beautiful county. It's stunning. I haven't seen cotton fields like that in 20 years. So it was, you live in a, in a beautiful part of the state of North Carolina. Now, we're proposing, a year ago, if I had made this presentation in Sampson County, I would have told you that we haven't spent any tax dollars, that we use private money to build the charters of freedom. I can't say that anymore, because in the last session of the General Assembly, we were allotted a half a million dollars to build 20 settings. Now, I have one more of those left, out of the 20 that were allocated, and I'm earmarking that for Sampson County. That's why I'm here tonight, to offer to gift to you the charters of freedom. Now, if you're willing to accept our gift, we will develop what's called a letter of intent, an LOI. The School of Government at Chapel Hill, Mr. Attorney, would probably call that a memorandum of understanding, and I'm sure you're familiar with that. But we will spell out in writing everything that we propose to give to you, and those things that you might need to spend a token amount of money on to make it more beautiful than it is, than it is. But we'll, we'll work all that out. But we're proposing to gift the charters of freedom to your county. Now, as a county manager for 38 years, I did a hitch in Union County, North Carolina, Monroe. About two years ago, I was making this presentation, or very similar to this, and I thought I was going home. It was going to be Old Home Day, because I knew everybody. I'd been there for a few years. And I made my presentation, and there was a young African American sitting there where Mr. Crumpler is sitting, and he said to me, he said, "Mr. Lewis, you did a great job on your presentation, but you haven't done anything for me." And I stepped back a little bit and tried to absorb what the young man was saying, and had a chance to speak with him after the meeting, and you know, he was right. I didn't do anything for him. We went back to our corporate headquarters in the big town of Valdez, North Carolina, 1,500 people, and we sat around our conference table, and we said, "We have a problem, that there's a group of our population that we have not included in the charters of freedom that's very important to us." And we began to put our heads together. And about a month later, our founder, who was in the video, Vance Patterson, came to us, and he said, "I have solved our problem. We now add a fifth pedestal to the charters of freedom." And that fifth pedestal will contain the 13th, 14th, 15th, 19th, and 24th amendments, which make us all the same, regardless of our gender or the color of our skin. We're the same under the Constitution as amended. Now, when Thomas Jefferson and James Madison left Virginia to go to Philadelphia to craft the document, they took with them something called the Virginia Papers. Now, the Virginia Papers abolished slavery. They weren't in Philadelphia very long until they realized that they didn't have the votes to pass something similar to the Virginia Papers. But whether it was divine guidance from above or the brilliance of the founding fathers, they placed language within the Constitution that allows it to be amended as our society changes and our world changes and our country changes. It's quite an ordeal to get an amendment. It takes some major effort to do that, but we're blessed to have that language within our Constitution that allows it to be amended. I went back to Monroe after we had developed the Civil Rights Amendments, the 13th, 14th, 15th, 19th, and 24th, and I had a chance to make a similar presentation. And the young man who was seated there, Mr. Crumpler, where you are, had tears running down his cheek because we had responded to him. When we dedicated the charters of freedom there in Monroe, I had a chance to tell our staff, "This is where it all started. This is where we completed the circle. This is where we told the world that the Constitution as amended makes us all the same, regardless of our gender or the color of our skin." Now, when we build the charters of freedom here in your county, we'll have a big celebration. It's a fun, fun day for us, and we will dedicate the charters of freedom to your beautiful county. We intend it to be given to all the citizens of the county, henceforth the reason we come to you, because you represent every citizen of Sampson County, and you're the rightful recipient of the charters of freedom. Now, I have, I was with the organization before there was an organization. After retiring as a county manager in 2011, and trying to figure out what I was going to do for the rest of my youth, Vance Patterson asked me to come on board with him. I set up the very first meeting of the charters of freedom before there was a Foundation Forward. We have sighted and built 60 in North Carolina. We have over 75 nationwide. We're as far north as Wasilla, Alaska. We're as far west as California. We're talking to the mayor in the city of Honolulu to build there. But my goal is to have all 100 counties in North Carolina, henceforth why the Journal Assembly saw merit in what we do and offered to help fund us. We're expecting to get a similar appropriation to the one we got a year ago to help finish the other counties in North Carolina. There's five under construction right now. That means there's 65 sighted in North Carolina. I have 35 more to go to accomplish my goal. And, Mr. Chairman, you've been most gracious with your time to allow me to take this block of time that you've given me, but I'll stop there and see if you have any questions of me.
Any questions? I think you made it pretty clear to everyone. Thank you.
Well, well, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here, and I look forward to dedicating the charters of freedom in your beautiful county. I assume that I'll be working closely with the county manager, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We need a clean site that's 20 feet by 40 feet with nothing under the ground. A survey will show what's buried there, if anything. We will help you decide where to build in Sampson. Courthouses are a good place, or veterans organizations are a good place. I was delighted to see that the Marine who participated in your opening ceremony, I'm an old Marine, and I, like every veteran, took an oath to protect and defend that Constitution, and it's very precious to veterans. If you have no further questions, then I'll conclude, Mr. Chairman, and say, with your authorization and the board's blessing, we will begin to develop the letter of intent and look at locations within your county.
Okay. I think we should.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the chairman, county manager, and Ms. Commissioner Lee have a subcommittee that decides or develops the letter of intent and also works toward discerning best location to put the charters of freedom.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor? So carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I'd love to stay longer, but I have a four-hour drive.
I understand.
Thank you, clerk, for putting me early on the agenda.
You're welcome.
Have a blessed evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, continuing on with public information, I'm going to ask Daniel and Lance to deal come up with the NC DOT updates.
Good to see y'all this afternoon. That's a tough act to follow. I'm not quite that good of a public speaker, but I'm going to give it all I got. So just give y'all a few, few notes from Sampson Maintenance DOT. The last week or so, we've been working on snow and ice equipment. Little early in the year, yes, but we won't be prepared, and I probably won't see y'all again until it has snowed. So we've got a new salt shelter on our yard that was built this summer, holds 2,500 tons of salt, so we think we got that covered. Last year, we cleared the county three times with seven trucks, through some help from our equipment shop and some various other places. We were up to 13 trucks that are able to push snow and put out salt, so we hope to have a little advantage this year. Another small update, over the past couple months, we did a little project on Fred Two Road, went in, cut shoulders, put some pipes in, paved the road. We enjoy those opportunities, our people do. That's where they shine, is the projects like that. To, to all the citizens in the county, three or four months ago, so what we have is, we call them cars, they're citizen action requests, and it's when people call in wanting things done or needing things done. We go look at them and kind of address it. We had upwards of 250 of those, and now we're right at the 100 mark. And all, all while, things are being called in, so we're trying to get ahead, we're trying to do a lot for the people that are calling in those things. And a couple other things, it is getting colder, and the deer are moving. If you see deer, call us. We'd really rather pick them up fresh than three days later. So feel free to call our office for, that's what we do, we get them up. So we'll try to keep the highways clean. And one last thing is, just to give y'all a success story, I think I updated y'all, I don't know, six months ago or so, Daniel and I went to Lakewood High School and a recruiting event, looking some high schoolers that wanted to go to work. We were able to get somebody to come to work for us, and he's on permanent now, doing great. Those are things we're proud of. We're proud to go to those high schools and get people from the community that, that want to develop this county. So we're very proud of that, and I'll turn it over to Daniel, if no questions.
Okay.
Thank y'all.
Yeah.
Chairman, members of the board, thank y'all for the opportunity to come back, and thank you, Lance, for, for all you do. I'm the one that, once Lance and his team, they, they conduct all their maintenance services as far as replacing any pipes. I'm the one that gets the, the privilege to administer the contracts for, for paving. So I'm here to give some updates on our construction projects that we've got underway. Right now in the county, the only active bridge project that we do have is the bridge replacement on Boykin Bridge Road. That structure is complete. The only thing that remains is the grading and paving, and we're, we're hopeful that we'll, we'll get that completed before our seasonal limitations kick in for asphalt placement, barring no unforeseen setbacks. As far as resurfacing, we were, we were able to, to complete a contract that I had spoke about with several routes, we call them maps, in, in recent meetings, but on that one, we completed 20, approximately 25 miles of, of paving. Goshen Church Road, the circle at Newton Grove, NC 55 from 50 to Johnston County, Mingo Church Road, Underwood Road, Murphy Road, Mosley Avenue, Chancy Road, Bonny Mill, Roseboro Highway, Dixie Road, and Bass Lake Road. So those were all roads that we were just recently able to finally complete that project 100% active. We've got a paving contract. I know there's been plenty of interest, and it's not foretime, but Keener Road has, has received some, some pavement. Carnegie Town Road has been paved, and Preacher Henry Road's been paved. We've, we've now, today, moved to Summerhill, and left to complete on that contract is Roseboro Street from 242 to Roseboro Highway, and then we've got Clinton Street from the Roseboro Town Limits to the Dead End. The other active project we've got resurfacing is on NC 41, near Harrell's, from Harrell's to the Bladen County line. We're widening, we've already got the widening complete on NC 41, and we're, we're now resurfacing that. And after we complete that route, we'll jump over to Wildcat Road and also widen and pave that route. And left on that contract would be NC 55 from Johnston County line to Hornet County line. Recently awarded, our contract that we've got is DC 00488, and that, the first map is Isaac Weeks Road from US 701 Northeast Boulevard to King Road. I know there's been a lot of interest on, for that route, too. Then we go to North Boulevard from 421 Northeast, or Northwest Boulevard to Beaman Street, map three, Sunset Avenue, Fayetteville Street from US 421 Southwest Boulevard to McCoy Street. That section is going to be paved at night. We coordinated that with the city, and due to its proximity, the businesses and all that was, that they're in the city limits of Clinton, we felt like it was less impactful if we did that at night. So I wanted to make y'all aware of that. Then the last map for that contract is Westover Road from Pierce Street to West Elizabeth Street. Forthcoming, in, in the next couple weeks, we'll be letting a pavement preservation contract where we will be doing some chip seal on JB Wilson Road from 421 to 1636 Wash McLam Road, Roanoke Road from Witt Road to Straw Pond Road, Pleasant Union Road from NC 24 to Dunn Road, and Carey Bridge Road from 24 to Born Brick Road, and Old Brick Mill Road from Pleasant Union to West Dotter Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, and then Doughty Road from Old Brick Mill to NC 24. That's all the updates I have related to our construction projects that we've got underway. But I did want to bring up a couple things that we've had some, some interest on and that, to let y'all know what we're working on. The, recently, in, across our division line, NC 24, the speed limit was increased to 60 miles per hour. We, as soon as we were made aware of that, we got, we, we started making some phone calls to see exactly, you know, what, what went on there and to see what we could do to, to up the speed on our section in Sampson County. So that, that review has been completed. That process is, it's submitted to our regional traffic group, and then, once it's approved by them, it goes before the Board of Transportation, and then it becomes, within the same week of getting the Board of Transportation's approval, a lot of times those signs and speed limit is increased. It has already made its way from our Traffic Services Unit to Regional Traffic, just waiting on their approval to be presented to the board and get final approval. So there's still a little, a little bit of delay that we'll see, but we are, we are working on that. The speed limit reduction at, at a few school sites, US 421, the speed limit was reduced there, and it's been signed. There were some flashers installed there. Union Intermediate School, flashers installed there, and we are looking and working with the county, Sampson County Schools, for some information that our folks need to conduct that study, to, to, to verify the reduction is warranted. So Union, Union Intermediate School and Union High School are both under review. I think- I think that is all I had as far as updates. Do y'all have any questions for me?
I just have one question. You mentioned the paving in Roseboro. I assume you're going to wait till after the town of Roseboro is done with the water infrastructure improvements, where they're digging up the streets, and I'd hate to see you pave a road that they turn around and tear back up to do a new pipe.
Yeah, I don't know how those routes correlate, if a section of that is, but we will definitely, you know, consider that, evaluate that, and it's inevitable at times, you know, whenever we do pave, there's often times where there are some utility failures in there, but we'll definitely make sure, do what we can to make sure that that doesn't happen.
I just want to thank you and Lance for what you're doing in the southern end of the county that is certainly needed, widening those roads, because we have a lot of big trucks, and those roads are real narrow, and if people drive like I do, they have a hard time getting through there. So I know that the residents appreciate it, too, and I just want to thank you for taking my calls, because I have called you sometime on Saturday, and you didn't say nothing, you just took my complaint. But I thank you because you're doing a great job, both of you, doing a great job for Sampson County, and I just want to thank you for it, because we're working together now on those speed limits being reduced at Union Intermediate and Union High School, Dr. King, I know he's here tonight, and he's working on getting that information that you need to complete that project. But I just want to give you kudos, because we certainly need the widening of those two roads in the southern end of the county. Thank you.
And then you truly thank you for that speed limit, working on that 60 miles an hour, because there's many calls made that says Cumberland County had it widened Sampson, and thank you.
Thank y'all.
Appreciate you. Thank y'all. Call it Ms. Edwards now, please.
Good evening. So a couple of months ago, and please pardon my voice, I'm sorry, a couple of months ago, I came to speak to you about a smaller digital inclusion grant that the library and cooperative extension received. As a part of that, Mid-Carolina Council of Government let Melissa know about a larger pot of money that was available to counties within their region, so for Sampson County, I believe Cumberland and Harnett County. And so they facilitated us being able to apply for a grant through the Camber Foundation. And we did apply, the library applied and was awarded an $18,000 grant from the Camber Foundation. It really is kind of, in addition to what we had already planned to purchase, but on a larger scale, with that grant, it is going to allow us to order more hotspots for checkout, and they'll be able to be checked out for a longer period of time. And we're also going to purchase devices, some of those to be available for checkout, some of those to be available to assist patrons with their digital literacy questions, and assist them with the devices in-house and at other locations where we're doing digital literacy assistance. So the expanded initiative aligns with the Sampson County Digital Inclusion Plan, which strengthens public access to technology and empowers residents with the skills needed to navigate an increasingly digital world. The first part of the grant, we have ordered the devices, but everything's not been received yet, so we haven't been able to implement everything yet, but there'll be more information to follow as devices arrive and we're able to put them into circulation and use. Does anybody have any questions?
I just appreciate you continuing on what you're doing and doing the job you're doing there, we appreciate it, county does. Thank you.
Thank you. Y'all have a good evening. Oh, did you? I'm sorry. Did somebody else have?
No, I didn't have.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Charlton.
Good evening. I'm here to give you a water update. First of all, the Avon Ho project, we have just about finished the original phase of that. Went by there today, and there's probably a couple of miles left to finish that. Later on tonight, the engineers is going to come and ask y'all's approval for change order, to finish the last three miles of the Avon Ho project. Once we get that done, all the water line will be laid, the only thing will be left is putting in the booster pump station and hooking to the home. So everything's going real good with that project. GFL project, which that consists of the avenue, White Woods Road, Lakewood School Road, Bubba Gump Lane, Marion Amos Road, part of Flick Cooper Road, part of NC 242, and Laurel Lake Road. That has been bitted out, and we're supposed to open the bids on that tomorrow. Hopefully, we will get a good bid and three bidders, and we can start that hopefully by the first year, that project, which would be great. Clement Phase Two, we have sent off for DEQ review of our plans and get the permits and all from them. Soon as we receive that back from DEQ, we will be ready to do the bidding on the Clement Phase Two project. Southern wells, they're going to start clearing the King Road well site tomorrow, hopefully if weather permits, and start after they get that lot cleared, they will start doing a test well there, and hopefully we'll find abundance of water at that location. After they finish up King Road, they'll be moving to Taylor's Bridge Highway for second test well there. Grants, got a little good news with the grants. Late last week, I received an email from DEQ in reference to Old Warsaw Road. This is an intent, letter of intent to fund, it's a conditional grant. Division of Water Infrastructure has received the spring 2025 application you submitted, but was not selected for State Revolving Fund Award. The Division has determined that your project is eligible to receive the emerging contaminants in small or disabled disadvantaged communities. Federal grant up to $3 million, $343,750. Project fund is a subject to DOT, receiving funds from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. It's a conditional grant, which I don't think there's going to be no problem with that. I am doing some research, I've sent some emails out today to get clarification on it, but the funding conditions is a letter of commitment to connect to the water system, and that is the houses in that community, we've got to get a letter from them. Well, we'll go out and talk with each household and get them to sign up for water. A knowledge in the timeline for completion of the work, and commitment to pay the monthly water bill, they'll have to be committed to pay their water bill each month. From all homeowners in that area that their wells are contaminated, and the state has declared them to be unsafe to drink from. Engineer report has got to be sent in by February the 6th to be eligible for these funds, which should be no problem, I have done and spoke with our engineers, and they are working on getting that engineer report to DEQ. But anyway, that's good news, we've got funding coming for Old Warsaw Road, we've been working hard, Ms. Hunt's been working hard on that for over three years now, and hope we're going to see the hard work pay off now. Any questions?
That's good, that's a good report.
Thank you.
When, Mr. Turk, when will we hear about the grants that you applied for Ole Minns Highway?
Ole Minns Highway grant will be after the first of year. We've sent them in what they call the Fall Revolving Grant Fund. We've sent that in, they've got it, and they'll usually grade it sometime around the first year, so hopefully January, February, we'll hear something on that.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. All right, at this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Johnson if he will to come up and give us an update, please.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Our next property reevaluation is for the 2028 tax year. Back into spring, we received three bids. The lowest responsible bidder was Piner Appraisal Company out of Morehead City. They've been in business for 25 years, and they do work throughout the state. Mr. Hudson told us to move forward with that lowest possible bid that we received, and select Piner Appraisal Company. They contacted me early last week, and they're ready now to move forward with the field work, which, you know, that's the most costly and time-consuming part of the project. So they're ready to move forward. We sent a list of all the vehicles, makes and models, to the Sheriff's Department, so they would have those to hand that out. And also, all the vehicles will be marked county contractors, all the appraisers in the field will have identification on them, and we're going to do all we can, we've got all the improved properties will be visited and reviewed, data will be collected, new photographs will be taken, and we'll do what we can in terms of notifying the public, using the website, social media, all of the avenues, just to make sure that we keep the public informed as to what's going on and where we are in the process. So that will begin probably, he said it could be the end of this week, maybe next week, when they get their appraisers in the field. And that's where we are right now, will be about two years.
Any questions?
The contractor, just to be clear, is not the same one that did the last reevaluation?
No, they're not. Actually, Pearson Appraisal has done, I know the last four, they sold out a little over a year ago to a bigger company. That company submitted a bid, but it was actually higher than Piner Appraisal. And I've known Gary Piner for many years, like I say, he does work throughout the state. I've contacted several counties that he's done work in, different types of appraisal projects, and nothing but, you know, good reviews from everybody I talked to.
More questions? Thanks, sir, appreciate that, for bringing us up to date. Before we move on into the consent agenda, I'm going to ask if Ms. Ann would come up and read the Veterans' Proclamation, please.
First of all, I'd like to ask all veterans to stand that's in the audience. Let's give them a round of applause. Because this is what keeps us safe, is our veterans and our military. I was asked to read this, and I'm honored to do it. It's a proclamation recognized in November 2025 as Veterans' Appreciation Month. Whereas it has long been our custom to commemorate November the 11th, the anniversary of the ending of World War I, by paying tribute to the heroes of that tragic struggle, and by rededicating ourselves to the causes of peace. And whereas for 250 years, our veterans have defended the values that made us strong so that our nation could stand as a citadel of liberty, a beacon of freedom, and a wellspring of possibilities. And whereas each one of our nation's veterans is a link in a chain of honor that stretches back to our founding days, bound by a sacred oath to support and defend the United States of America. And whereas this Veterans' Day, may we honor the incredible faith that our veterans hold, not just in our country, but in all of us. They are the solid steel backbone of our nation, and we must endeavor to continue being worthy of their sacrifices by protecting the freedoms that they have fought to defend. We owe them a debt of gratitude we can never fully repay, not just for fighting for our country, for our democracy, but for giving back to our communities and inspiring the next generation to serve, even after they hang up their uniforms. And thereas, on this Veterans' Day, we remember that we are forever indebted to those who stepped forward to defend the blessings of liberty. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed that Sampson County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the month of November 2025 as Veterans' Appreciation Month, and encourages Sampson County residents to participate in ceremonies and private prayers, recognizing veterans' courage and sacrifices to our nation, adopted this third day of November 2025. Thank you for giving me that opportunity, and thank all of the people here supporting veterans. Veterans can't do everything alone. I'm your veterans officer, and it is my pleasure to serve each one of them, and I ask y'all to continue with us to help serve them.
Ms. Ann knows, how long have you been serving us veterans? How long?
50 years.
And we want to say thank you and congratulations for what you did.
Amen. Job well done.
But time's up, many more to go.
We hope so.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, if there's no other discussion.
Got a second? Got a second? All those in favor? Motion's so approved. All right, at this time, I'm going to open a public hearing, and see if we have any, and set any comments regarding the Series 215 Limited Obligation Bond refinancing. Close public hearing. We'll move on to our action plan, and I'll turn that over to Ms. Melissa.
So I'm coming before the Board to request they adopt the approving resolution for the sale of the 2015 Limited Obligation Bonds. This resolution authorizes the county to refinance its installment payment obligations related to refunding limited obligation bond Series 2015, which financed the construction and equipping of Union High School and Midway High School. It approves the county to execute and deliver Amendment Number One to a 2017 installment financing contract with the Sampson Area Development Corporation, which would be part of the legal structure that would authorize the execution and delivery of limited obligation refunding bond Series 2025 in an amount not to exceed $25,500,000 to achieve its refunding. It approves and authorizes the forms of all related legal documents, including Amendment Number One to the installment financing contract, supplemental indenture number one, contract of purchase, letter of representation, and the preliminary official statement, and finally authorizes county officials to take all necessary actions to complete the refinancing and bond issuance. And at this time, I respectfully request that the Board adopt the approving resolution.
Look, a motion to adopt resolution.
I make a motion to adopt this second motion.
Have a motion, a second. All in favor? Motion's so carries. All right, Ms. Melissa, we're back to you again.
The second item before you is requesting that the Board approve what we're calling the Continuing Disclosure Policy. This contains a set of rules and agreements that obligates issuers of municipal bonds to provide ongoing financial and operating information to investors after the bonds are sold. The policy is based on SEC regulations that are designed to increase transparency and help investors assess the risk of their investments. It requires annual financial reporting, as well as event-based disclosures to be posted on the electronic Municipal Market Access website. I respectfully request that the Board approve the Continuing Disclosure Policy.
Motion to approve the Continuing Disclosure Policy.
And a second. All those in favor? Motion's so carries. I'm going to move forward to our Enterprise Operation Modernization Presentation. Brandon, I know you're walking up, but I think the county manager has something you'd like to address first.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and fellow commissioners. I would like an opportunity just to say a few words about this very important topic as far as as far as providing some further information about it. But I also want to take just a moment, I want to officially introduce Brandon Wiggins as our special projects manager. He has done a phenomenal job. There are a lot of the components of the Tyler, you'll hear more about this, but I'm going to refer to it as the Tyler ecosystem. And he has been responsible for implementing those and helping to guide the county through that as, as we go through those phases. And so he's done a tremendous job. He's done a tremendous job putting information together for you to hear tonight. And I just can't brag on him enough, and I'm just grateful that we have him as part of the team here in Sampson County. So beyond that, I want to say that as far as what you're considering tonight, when you hear from Brandon, commissioners, you charged us with innovating and working more efficiently. I think you'll see that what he covers tonight is doing exactly that. We currently have somewhat of a fragmented system for our permitting concerning environmental health, planning inspections, the permitting process. It's a very broken process. The systems do not speak to each other. It's very problematic. It's very inefficient, not to mention the inefficiencies created for finance as well. In addition, the system we're currently using for planning and inspections is, which includes environmental health, is set to expire in August of 2026. Therefore, there is a concern for, you know, making this happen and the urgency, knowing that it takes a lot of time to implement these things and work through the process. It doesn't happen just overnight. So we do have a sense of urgency in that regard, that we want to make sure that we have in place what is needed. Once again, the county has already invested in many products of the Tyler ecosystem. I would say we're probably 75% of the way there. And what you're going to hear tonight would be roughly the remaining 25% to go full circle and have the complete package to enable us to perform more efficiently. And as we perform more efficiently, it will ultimately save the county money. And Brandon will touch on those items as well. One other thing before I ask Brandon to start, I would like to ask Ms. Melissa Burton, our Finance Director, if she could just speak to some of the points of how it affects finance and efficiencies there.
Thank you, Mr. Van. Good evening, commissioners. Building on what Mr. Van has shared, I want to detail how this investment will be transformative for our county's financial processes and operational agility. The Finance Office is currently facing major issues which impact efficiency. The county operates with multiple ineffective software solutions across several key departments. This situation requires extensive manual reconciliation and data entry processes, which increases the potential for errors and delays our reporting capabilities. A comprehensive Tyler ERP system will offer, offer a single integrated platform, eliminating redundant data entry and manual data transfers. It will unify our payment processing into one processor and will standardize revenue collections and eliminate manual reconciliations of the payments. It will ensure seamless data flows and dramatically accelerate financial reconciliations, moving us towards more real-time reporting capabilities. This is not just a technology upgrade. It is the foundation for a modern, financially sound administrative structure. We are confident that this overhaul will resolve longstanding inefficiencies and align perfectly with the board's mandates for innovation and improved customer service. I would like to thank Brandon Wiggins for his tireless effort and dedication in formulating this comprehensive solution, and I will now turn it over to Brandon to further explain this exciting endeavor.
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Mr. Van, members of the board. I appreciate the opportunity to go over this. Obviously, what we're talking about is a very large project. This should be looked at no differently than a large infrastructure project. We are fundamentally transforming the way we transfer data between departments, and we're talking about big departments that touch a lot of people, Public Works with our water, we're talking about the Tax Office, we're talking about building inspections, which as we know is critical to economic development in the county. So we are going to try to touch on this as briefly as possible in the interest of time. We are more than welcome, or more than able to provide additional details as you need them. So we'll go ahead and get started. So first of all, quick overview of what we're going to be covering. We're going to cover our shared goals, where we are currently, just kind of speaking to the current reality that we're in, the core problem that is inhibiting us from being able to achieve the efficiency we have talked about for years, the crucial insight that is going to help inform the solution, ultimately what that solution is. And then finally, we're going to touch on the project management itself and how we plan to measure success, because obviously, we need to prove we're doing what we say we're going to do. So first of all, we all share a deep commitment to Sampson County. I know personally, I'm very passionate about what I do. I can assure you, I am not up here talking to you in front of all these people if I did not believe strongly in what I'm about to say. I feel you are all very passionate about Sampson County as well. That was nice to hear the gentleman at the front talk about Mr. Hudson. I had a chance to work with him directly across the hall for five months. I want to reiterate how phenomenal a job he did in kind of shifting us from old ways of doing business to start approaching things very, very differently. And so a lot of what we're talking about, I would like you to view it as an extension of what we have already started. This is a continuation of that commitment. Passion is important, but as we're all aware, we do not drift in good directions. We discipline and prioritize ourselves there. You put this into practice in the spring when you passed a list of strategic priorities, if you will. Those priorities have guided a lot of what we've done internally at the county since you passed those in the spring, and those are not short-term goals, a lot of those. Those are longer view goals. So there's over 30 of these, there's a lot of them, but I would like to summarize them very briefly. Our shared goals, including make, making smart investments for our community's future, delivering excellent services to our residents and businesses, and operating efficiently to maximize our resources. Obviously, we're publicly funded. We need to be very aware how we're spending our money, and if we have opportunities to operate more effectively and efficiently, we need to pursue that. Innovation's been mentioned a couple of times tonight. Technology is at a place we can significantly change the way the county does business. So first of all, before we get into the specifics, let's talk about change as a concept. What do we mean when we say change? To set the stage, I would like to give you a brief parable called the spoon, the shovel, and the excavator, and I think this will be very helpful in framing our discussion here tonight. So imagine we are a company and we have been charged with digging a ditch. That is our company's job. That is what we're going to do. We hire 100 employees. These are full-time employees with full-time benefits. We're all aware that is a very expensive thing to hire people. We give all these individual people spoons and we task them with digging this ditch. Can we dig the ditch? Yes, we can, but we're going to do it very, very slowly, very inefficiently. People are going to get burned out. People are going to get bored. It is not a sustainable process. So let's say we invest in shovels. We could probably hire fewer people and give them shovels. Let's say we hire 40 people, we give them a shovel. We can still dig the ditch. We can work very, very hard, but there's only so much we can do. And if you're coordinating 40 people, that requires managers, that requires a lot of other layers just to keep everybody moving in the same direction. Now what if we bought an excavator? All of a sudden, digging this ditch is no problem. I can dig an excavator with one employee. I then have money, I can pay someone to maintain my excavator. I can pay someone to secure my excavator. I may even have money to pay someone to plan future ditches, a strategic planner, if you will. The point being, we real, reallocate our resources from a lot of small manual processes that require lots of people. Yes, the excavator is a one-time cost that is rather expensive, but it is going to pay for itself over time dramatically in the amount you're going to save. So with that in mind, let's talk about our current state. I like this image because there's a man on a bicycle and his wheels are squares. He can pedal this bicycle really, really hard. He can work incredibly hard, and he's not going to get but-so far, because this is the wrong tool for the job he's trying to accomplish. So our core problem here at the county, and this has been referenced a few times, but our county processes, meaning our individual departments, are siloed and mired in paper-heavy manual operations. More paper is more people at the end of the day. Now I know what I'm about to talk about is the unsexy part of all the internal operations of the county, but that's where all the money is going. So understanding it and understanding how we can improve it is ultimately how we're going to save money sustainably moving forward. So the crucial insight here is integration is key. Public Works works on its own system. They manually report back to finance that has to be keyed in. The Tax Office operates independently. They manually report back to finance that has to be keyed in. The Building Inspections Department operates independently. They manually report back to finance. The volume of paper and data entry that is required to make all of this go is significant. Significant. So what we're talking about is that integration, meaning integrate these systems into a single ecosystem, that is how we're going to solve this problem. So again, the primary cause of ma, excuse me, manual work is lack of integration. Our systems cannot efficiently talk to each other, ensuring the continuation of slow, expensive, paper-based, manual processes. We've spent money on technology over the years. That is a fact. We have spent money on things that haven't worked because the way we approached the purchase was the wrong way to approach it. We didn't approach it strategically from a county perspective. We let an individual department decide what individual department wanted to do, with no consideration for how it would affect finance, how it would affect any other department that has to interact with that process. So when we say integration, what are we talking about? Business systems integration turns a collection of separate software tools into a synchronized, efficient ecosystem that supports better decision-making and better customer experience. So these are business systems we're talking about. Yes, we're a county government. We have business processes just like any other organization. We have to manage our money well. We have to manage our people well. And ultimately, the processes in place are going to impact how well those things work. So key aspects of business systems integration. Seamless data exchange that allows data to flow automatically between systems. So these manual reporting to finance that then has to be manually keyed back into the system that ultimately finance reports to you, that goes away. The data can flow directly into Munis ERP, which is where all our finances are held. Workflow automation. Obviously, there are approvals that need to be done for various processes inside county government. We can make that approval process electronic. We can get away from the physical signatures, get away from the physical paper, and again, more paper is more people. And then achieving, our word for the day, interoperability. You can think of software as speaking its own language. We have certain software that speaks one language. We have certain software that speaks another language. We did not consider that they did not speak the same language when some of these purchases were made. So when we say we want to invest in the Tyler ecosystem, that eliminates the language barrier in simple terms. We are not trying to translate two and three different languages. We are moving data from one system to another using the same language. And if you've ever listened to a bilingual anything, you realize it goes much slower, and you have to slow down dramatically to get your message across because everyone is not speaking the same language. So in simple terms, that is what we have with a lot of our software solutions. They don't integrate. So the solution obviously would be an integrated enterprise ecosystem. And when we say enterprise, we are thinking of the county as a whole. It is an enterprise, yes, with various departments, but they should not be operating independently of one another. This should be a coordinated effort. So the key actions you are considering tonight, there are three. System unification. So quick explanation, I don't want to get too far in the weeds on this, but we have two instances of Munis ERP. Our Finance Office uses one, and we pay for a second instance of Munis that the Tax Office uses. Now this was a decision that was made 20-plus years ago as a result of something that at this point in time is no longer relevant. We have no reason to have it set up like that. So we need to get all that data under a single instance of Munis. So all your tax revenues, all that manual reporting going to Melissa's department right now, automatically flows to finance the day it happens. We're not waiting till the end of the month to get a report. We're not having to manually key all this information back in. It's collected, it's posted, you're done. Second piece of this is departmental integration. So there are two pieces of software in particular, solutions. Tyler Utility Module, this would be for the Public Works Department. This would be to better manage our water customers. We have approximately 7,000 water customers. You can imagine, that's a lot of data coming into finance every month in terms of payments received. This would streamline that process dramatically. Melissa's department gets a report that is very, very long. Every single month, someone has to go through every single line of that document and ensure all of that information is put back in the system. To say that is slow and inefficient would be an understatement. Being able to post that data daily, every 24 hours, makes a huge difference, and all of a sudden, that frees up people's time to do higher level work. Back to our excavator analogy, we don't have all these people digging with spoons. We have a specialist that runs the equipment. We have a specialist that does everything related to running that equipment. We can operate at scale more efficiently. Second piece is Tyler Enterprise Permitting and Licensing, also known as EPL. This would essentially replace our current solution with a solution, and Melissa, watch the demo with me. It is mind-blowing to realize what you can do with the right piece of software. It can do some incredible things we do not remotely have the capability to do at the moment. But essentially, this would streamline our inspections process. More importantly, it would give the customer, that's individual resident building a single house, also a developer building a whole neighborhood. We are not equipped to handle the developer building the whole neighborhood at the moment. We want economic development in the county. That is contingent upon us being able to handle that volume and facilitate those inspections and that planning process quicker and more efficiently. We cannot do that with our current system. It is a separate system. It is a mess. I'll leave it at that. I think you're aware, but it is not good. We do have an opportunity. The contract for our current planning and permitting software expires next August. So this is why, when Mr. Van mentioned the time-sensitive nature, this gives us time to hopefully build out this new solution, if not by that date soon after, so that we are in position to do what we need to do, hopefully as, again, there's more development coming into the county. And then finally, payment centralization. This is another thing, if you are not familiar with the internal workings of the county, you would not know, but we have four-plus payment processors. We use one payment processor for in-person payments. We use a payment processor for Public Works. We use a payment processor for building inspections. We use another payment processor for other functions in government. This is back to the manual reconciliation. You are getting all this paper from all these disparate systems. Somebody's got to go through all this paper and reconcile it all so that it's accurate. Again, very, very slow, very time-consuming. Our finance folks want to ensure they're giving you accurate information. The only way to do that is to do it slowly, because you cannot run through a manual process quickly, or you will make a lot of errors, to Melissa's point earlier. There's a lot of data entry, you need to go slow, be very, very conscientious when you're doing it. This would allow us to bring that data over to finance again on a daily basis. This would allow our contractors to see their projects. Where am I at in my project? What are, who's scheduled to work on my project? Things of that nature. We do not have that ability right now. If you've used our current system, there's a separate login portal for planning, there's a separate login portal for environmental health, and there's a third login portal for building inspections. That doesn't make sense for the citizen. It doesn't make sense for the people having to process the information. This would get it all in one place, allows to do everything in the same system, and our current system cannot handle our restaurant inspections. This has the ability to do that in addition to obviously building inspections, planning approvals, et cetera. So a lot more robust in what it can actually do. So the financial impact, clearly, this is your primary concern. This is why we are here tonight. We're fully aware of what we're asking for. There is a one-time implementation cost of $441,000. Now clearly, that was not budgeted. We had Mr. Hudson in the spring. This did not come up in the spring, clearly. 160 of that would come out of the Water Department, because obviously, some of this is specific to them. The remaining $281,000 would come from the fund balance were we to move forward on this. Now, that is the one-time cost, and now we're going to get into why does that make sense in terms of efficiency? Because that sounds like I just asked to spend a bunch more money. How is that saving us money? That is a good question. So why does this make sense? Number one, return on investment. Again, we're viewing this as an infrastructure project, no different than when you put a new water line. It takes time, but at the end of the project, you can recoup some of that investment. It has an impact, which is why you invested the money. It is not just an expense. So we have estimated our new annual operating costs will be offset by a larger amount in expense reductions, resulting in a net annual savings directly attributable to technology modernization. So currently, to put that in layman's terms, it is going to cost us about $90,000 a year to maintain all these new systems. That is going to be approximately $140,000 cheaper than what we do right now. So just to be clear, we're getting more on an annual basis at a lower cost. So over the course of three years, even if you just take into account that one area of savings, this would pay for itself within three years. We are confident, however, We are confident, however, there will be additional opportunities for savings. I will use our requisition process as an example. We went to electronic requisitions on July 1 of this year. And essentially, what that means is departments request to spend money via a requisition electronically. Those approvals move through the departments electronically. They go to Finance. Finance can then process those. Long story short, that process takes about 80% less time than it did the same time last year. To say that frees up staff time would be an understatement, and that is a single process. We're in the process of doing additional things with Finance as it pertains to invoicing, et cetera. But the point being, we have the ability now to implement solutions to legitimately save time and cut down on work. Some of the work that we had to do before is not even necessary. It's automated. So that is a key point here. Second thing, Mr. Van mentioned this earlier, our current Tyler solutions. The main thing I want you to pay attention to here is the blue and the orange. Those are things we have acquired in the last 12 to 18 months. Now, a lot of this, when it was acquired initially, was for the specific use of HR and Finance. And then as this conversation evolved, we realized, wait a minute, why don't we do this with the whole county government? Where HR was able to shed a single position, which is a 20% reduction. Finance has lost two positions. That's a 20% reduction. We're still able to do the work because we have better systems in place. So the main ones here, Content Manager and Tyler Forms, you could consider those foundational. That is how we're able to generate paperless billing using Tyler Forms. And then the Content Manager is how we're able to deliver that to the customer. It is in a cloud. It is accessible 24/7. So we can use that across all Tyler products. It's not just for HR. It's not just for Finance. We can use this for the entire ecosystem. So you have already invested in those. This is just building on the foundation you have already established. Another thing we could do is optimize our workforce. As you can imagine, if you have very specific software and very specific processes in each department, all of those have different processes that require very specified training that you cannot replicate. If I take you from this department and put you over there, you don't know what to do because the process is different, the payment processor is different, et cetera. This would allow us to standardize the collections process across all departments. And then if we have a need such as the Tax Office has peak times where they need additional staff, rather than staff it with an extra person for the entire year, this gives us the ability with our revenue collection staff to make them more modular. So if I have a need in the Tax Office, for instance, I can allocate people for a period of time to meet that peak demand, but I don't need to budget a whole position for the whole year to make that happen. Because again, the collections process will be the same across all these departments. If I can collect money in water, I can collect money in tax, I can collect money anywhere else. It's the same platform, the same process. Final point here, Esri and Tyler Technologies. You're probably already aware, but we have ARC GIS is how we house all our GIS data. That is by a company called Esri. Tyler Technologies and Esri have a 20-plus-year partnership. They work very, very closely together. It is called a gold partnership. They work very much hand-in-hand. Tyler is the industry leader in government software. Esri is the industry leader in GIS software. A lot of the reason we don't get the efficiency gains in our current solution for building inspections, for instance, is because it cannot handle the data coming in from our GIS system. It is a large volume of data. It's very complex. The system, and this is after speaking to our GIS staff, they're of the opinion it just can't handle it effectively. This solution is built to handle a large volume of data and to be able to leverage that data. So when we talk about enterprise permitting and licensing, for instance, there is a wizard built into the beginning. You answer a few questions. It could say feel for what are you trying to do? What is the scope of your project? More importantly, where are you located? We do not do planning for the entire county. There are planning zones in the county, City of Clinton, et cetera. People, generally speaking, don't understand the particulars. This would streamline the explanation on the front end to set expectations appropriately so that we can then get the job done. They can have clarity. I know what I'm supposed to do and what order for my project. I don't care about everybody else's project. I care about my project. It's customized to the user that needs to do whatever they need to do. And again, from a contractor perspective, if I have 40 homes I'm building, I can track all of that in one place. I can pay for all of that in one place. I can do that a lot more easy. And as we know, time is money in business, and we do not need to be in the business of wasting people's time. Customer service experience. The final part of this is called Resident Access. Now, we currently have a piece of software called Citizen Self-Service that is exclusively for the Tax Office. If you've ever tried to use it, it is not wonderful. It is old. It doesn't work. There is a new piece of software called Resident Access, which is very similar to what we have for employees called Employee Access. And essentially, what this does, it is an interface for the public to access anything they need to do with the county. It gives you a single point of contact. So from an explanation standpoint, from a communicating things to the public standpoint, we can point them to a single place. They can then do their utility billing. They can go pay for their inspection for the home they're building. They can do whatever they need to do in one location. And more importantly, they can pay for it one time. They do not have to pay for my water and then go pay for this, and then go pay for this, and then go pay for this. I can have a cart. I can see everything I owe. With Content Manager, I can see the bill associated with that cost, and I can pay my bill all at one time. Or I can set up a payment plan. Or there's multiple options. We can also accommodate a much wider range of payment providers. So this goes Apple Pay, Google Pay, any kind of credit card. There are eChecks, et cetera. There's a bunch of different ways to pay. So we're confident that would be a much better experience for the resident and for businesses doing business with Sampson County. So this is just an example. This is from the town of Brunswick, Maine. This is essentially kind of what it would look like. Obviously, we don't have boat registrations necessarily, but you get the basic idea. It is a very user-friendly. It's mobile-responsive, meaning it's built for a mobile phone. So it works on a phone. And as we know, there's a lot of people doing business on their phones. We need to recognize that reality and adapt to it sooner than later. And then as you'll notice, there is a login. You can tie this to a Google account, an Apple account, a Windows account, a Facebook account, et cetera. So again, this just streamlines the process of creating your personalized account for doing business with the county. And then you can manage your preferred payment methods. You can manage your bills, et cetera. And so just to be clear, part of that savings we mentioned earlier, we do a lot of unnecessary printing. We do not have the ability to offer paperless billing currently. Well, if you can't offer paperless billing, what's the alternative? You print everything. Even if they're on auto draft, they still get a piece of paper in the mail. This would give us the ability, they can opt for paperless billing, and over time, this is going to dramatically reduce the amount of money we spend on printing and sending bills. This works better for the customer, and it's much cheaper for the county. So that's a win-win. So project management, this is also very important. So obviously, effective project management is going to be necessary. I'm obviously the special projects manager. I would be overseeing this. Just to give you a quick background, I'm not coming into this green. I got my MPA in 2024 from UNCW. I have been our Tyler ecosystem manager, administrator in effect for the last year or so. And I was working in HR on HR-specific software prior to that, which is where a lot of our data is housed. So I have experienced all those orange and blue items you saw on that list. I have personally been involved in every single one of them, and it is a lot. I can assure you, this is not a simple thing we're talking about, but I am very passionate and believe fully this would be worth the investment, and we would not regret it in the slightest. So I would be leading this project, but I think it's important to also point out that this is going to take time. So what we're talking about again is large infrastructure. Yes, it's data. Yes, it's in the cloud, but there is a lot of details. You're talking about tax information. You're talking about building inspections. You're talking about integrating with GIS systems with all of our parcels, et cetera. That is a lot of data, a lot of information. So realistically, this is going to take combinations of teams for each of these pieces to inform this process, which in years past has not been done, which is kind of how we got in this situation. We didn't talk to the right people at the front. So we have already run all the tech specs by our GIS folks. They are very excited about the potential of this. We have sat in on demos with our Public Utilities Department. They seem to be very excited about the potential of this, and we have also sat in on demos for the enterprise permitting and licensing, which I cannot emphasize enough is worlds and worlds beyond what we're able to do right now. So realistically, based on Tyler puts you in a queue. You don't just get to pay the money and start immediately. You have to get in line. There's a dedicated project manager from Tyler. There's a dedicated implementation specialist from Tyler. And the reason the one-time cost is so high is because there's a lot of training built on the front end. Tyler wants to make sure the people that bought this software understand how to use it, number one, and can get the full use out of it once it's implemented. They're not interested in selling you a product and then just running away. They have built a very robust business on building solutions for cities, towns, municipalities. So realistically, the EPL project, the Public Utilities Project, and the Tax Recombination Project, we would likely not be able to start on those until sometime in the spring. We do not have a specific date yet because obviously, we are not under contract yet. Once we are under contract, they would provide us information. And then obviously, I'm more than welcome to give any updates as often as you would like those if we do proceed with this. And then go live. We have tentatively estimated spring 2027. I'm confident we can get it done a little sooner than that, but that would be your farthest out, if you will. So the latest would be January to February 2027. And again, we're talking about a lot of data, so we're likely to run into a few hiccups along the way as we start delving into the internal processes in some of these departments. But part of this process is to improve those processes in conjunction with implementing the software. Measuring success. So obviously, I can tell you this is working great, but it doesn't matter if I can't prove it. I just told you I'd save you $140,000 a year. So part of measuring our return on investment is obviously demonstrating to you, again, once these are fully implemented, that we are in fact operating at a lower cost than we were before. It is important to point out in terms of implementation, you are not paying one time at the front the full amount. You are paying in installments as you are implementing the product, as the implementation specialist and the project manager are interacting with your organization directly. So realistically, the total of that money that we talked about before, the 441, is not going to be paid out in this budget year because this is going to span anywhere from eight to 12 months. And that cost will be spread out over that implementation. In terms of the annual costs, those would not go into effect until the product is live. So let's say the product doesn't go live till January 2027. We're not paying annual costs for those six months we didn't use it. That is not how Tyler is set up. So additionally, we are going to do what we can on an individual department level to get some baseline key performance indicators in terms of how long is it taking to process a permit request? How long is it taking to do all of these things? What percentage of our water customers are on auto draft? And then the goal is to get everyone as much as possible on paperless because again, that's ultimately going to be less expensive for the county and ultimately the taxpayer because that's who is paying for all of this. So I just want to reiterate before we end this, this is not just talk about innovation. We've heard that word a couple of times tonight. This is a real effort to overhaul and improve county government to be leaner, more agile, and more convenient for the people who fund it. We believe this is essential to earning and deepening the public trust, and I'm a big believer in everything we do needs to be through that lens. Is it helping improve the public trust or is it not? And if it's not, what can we do to improve it? I think this would do a lot in showing the community that we are committed to actually making the government work more efficiently, not just talking about it. And we could demonstrate that through lowered expenses and through these key performance indicators indicating similar to the requisition process. This can get done significantly faster than we're doing it now, which is ultimately going to save time, which is ultimately money. So with that, apologize, I went a little longer than I anticipated, but if you have any questions at all, I'm more than happy to answer those, and I realize there's a lot of information there.
Yeah, I have a question, or a couple of questions. Thank you for your presentation. Very well done. I just want to be sure, since this is a large investment, and I've had experience with other software companies that my own business has used. We get into one, and then they get bought out by another company and everything changes or for whatever reason, the software is no longer properly supported. How big is Tyler Software Company as a whole? Where is it based out of? How many employees does it have? How long has it been in business? Will they continue to support the investment we're going to make for years to come and not just be a flash in the pan?
So I do not have the number of employees specifically. Tyler is the biggest government software company in the country. When I joined the county in 2019, they were trading at around $225 per share. I think they're over $500 per share now. They have a very much a, I don't want to call it a monopoly, but they're getting close. They're in so many things. I don't think there's any threat of them going out of business or being sold in the near future because they are making a lot of money and they are buying companies and acquiring new products. So for instance, our veteran software was recently acquired by Tyler in the past couple of years. They're actively building out a larger portfolio so that they can offer literally a one-stop-shop. They want to be able to offer you anything you need to do in terms of operating a government on a local level.
Since they're a publicly-owned company, then that means that they're going to be around for a while, so that's a good thing. How much of the investment is actually for physical infrastructure that the county will have to house versus what's going to be used on the cloud?
Okay, so that is a great question. We were on-prem with Tyler until I want to say three years ago. We transitioned to Tyler hosts all our data now. We did not have the staff to support on-prem hosting. That takes a lot of very talented people to host all that data on-site. So all of our data is hosted with Tyler. So the only thing in this proposal that is actual physical devices are the point-of-sale systems for the cashiering. So that is basically, we're going to have to replace all the equipment across all the departments that actually collect money physically in person. That is both a receipt printer, a check scanner, and then obviously, they can facilitate the transaction using that device. But I think that's $60,000 for the hardware, but that is a one-time cost, and that should accommodate every department we have across the county.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And looking at this, the hardware, did we possibly look at having some kiosk at the public library system?
We actually have had that conversation. I know there has been a movement to make the libraries more, to offer more services than just books. That is very much what we're envisioning because with the Tyler payments and cashiering, because the transaction is the same both in-person and online, if we can facilitate that transaction in-person one time, help the person understand the process, they may feel more comfortable not having to come in the office moving forward. We have a large county. Traveling to Clinton to pay a bill is kind of a pain depending on where you're living. So the goal is if we can train our staff on that payment process, they can help individuals like at the libraries if they want to. And once they're comfortable, the process is exactly the same online. It is the exact same screens, the exact same process. So that is our hope is that yes, we can use the libraries to kind of facilitate understanding of how these systems work and basically empower the citizen to do it themselves so they don't need our staff during normal business hours. It's 24/7 when it's convenient for them.
You mentioned training, and one thing that I want to be very clear about, if the board so chooses to fund this project, I would like to see the training taking place where we have multiple individuals from multiple departments receive the training. I don't want it compartmentalized. I want it across the board. I want the institutional knowledge to be spread out all across the county organizations so that we don't run into issues like we have in the past.
Correct. As you're fully aware, basically, we had a single point of failure previously. There was one person that knew how everything worked. That is exactly what we're trying to get away from. If we can get everyone in the same ecosystem, that allows us the ability to start spreading that knowledge out so we're not dependent on one person to run these systems. Obviously, the implementation is one thing, but I am not a specialist in Public Works. I am not a specialist in the Tax Office. That requires people in that domain with that knowledge, with that training. And then more importantly, if we do run into an issue because it's all on the same, in the same ecosystem, it's all built on similar architecture, we can troubleshoot it much ecosystem, it's all built on similar architecture, we can troubleshoot it much easier than if it's a piece of software that only the tax office uses. Like, I don't know anything about it. I don't know how to help you. Whereas this would allow us to build out exactly what you're describing, which is basically a group of people, spread out that knowledge to a department level, and then make that more robust and more succession planning, more doable in essence. Because yes, we have run into that exact issue before.
That was one of my main concerns. The other thing is, when we look at the cloud hosting, we do own the data, correct?
That is correct. We own all of our data. We are basically paying for them to house the data, but all of our data is ours, yes.
And this is just for clarification, but they do offer backup services mirroring of the client, I mean, mirroring of the servers.
Yes, I can share that they are very stringent about making sure they demonstrate that because, like I said, Tyler's one of the bigger companies in the country that does this. This is not new for them. They've been in business. I think David actually got with Tyler in the 90s, if I'm not mistaken. So we were one of their first customers back when they were very small, and they have grown very, very large. So yes.
Now, the other question, or not really a question, I guess, when we look at this, have all the stakeholders from all county departments been consulted and were in agreement?
Yes, sir. We did not want to move forward with this until, so for instance, Public Works was able to view the demo recently. We did not get that scheduled as soon as we wanted to, but they were able to see a full demo. They gave us a list of questions going into that demo, concerns, and just making sure, can it do everything we need it to be able to do, to your point? They addressed all of that in the demo. Similar with enterprise permitting and licensing, we're very aware of what our issues are. That was part of how we started the process. What does it definitely need to be able to do to meet the needs of our staff that are ultimately trying to serve the public? If they have expressed that this is an issue, we need to make sure we got that front of mind when we're looking at a solution, not, oh, we didn't think about that till after. So yes.
Okay. Just to ease the mind of my fellow commissioner here, Tyler has the state contract for Administrative Office of the Courts for the e-Warrant System and the Citation Systems, so.
Thank you. My issue was the training, but you explained that, so, because across the board, that's a lot of work going in, and the training is very critical here.
Yes, so that front-end cost is primarily, that's largely what it is, is making sure we have robust training so that we have everyone trained to the level they need to be. So yes, sir.
Thank you.
It's very important, the training. Since each department operates differently, the training is going to be different for each department. So will they have, like, one-on-one training for their departments?
So we could do a combination of things. I think part of what this is going to do is going to eliminate the fact some of the way our current processes are set up do not need to be set up that way. Generally speaking, we should start in finance and work our way out to the departments, not the opposite, which is what we've done traditionally, because ultimately, finance has to account for everything that's happening. So part of this is clarifying what is a finance function versus what is a departmental function, and just making that transfer from the departmental-specific to the finance component as smooth as possible. But yes, there will be specialized training for staff on their departmental-specific processes, but a lot of this is overhauling things on the back end to make the finance side of those processes go a lot smoother, so all this reconciliation you keep hearing about does not have to be done manually.
I'm good. Thank you, Brian.
Yes, sir.
Any more questions?
Just like to clarify one last time to have the county manager on the record. This is your recommendation as county manager, that we invest this money?
Absolutely is. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we move forward with this project and appropriate the money as needed.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion so carries.
Thank you all for your time.
You got out easy on this one. I made a similar proposal about 12 years ago, and I walked out about 100 pounds lighter.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Very well explained. At this time, problems? Thank you, Rip. Our help director.
Good evening, everybody. I'm not going to be as, like, Ryan, like, very short, sweet to the point. I'm here this afternoon or tonight to request approval of policy for our expedited IP and certification fee through Environmental Health. I have Corey here with me tonight also, who will be able to answer any questions that you may have. We did approve a fee with the budget this year, and this is just a process that we want to provide so that you'll know that we've got policy in place. This policy is wanting that people can apply, put their applications in, and receive services within five working days. One issue that may come up, the timeframe and delays may be due to the weather conditions, maybe due to staff inavailability, which we are down one person right now. So that does happen periodically. To qualify for this expedited fee, the following conditions must be met before the site evaluation can be scheduled. Got to make sure the property and house concerns are clearly flagged. The property must be accessible, mowed with a clear or marked path. You must have an 811 utility mark, and it must be completed. If the property is being surveyed, that authorization will not be released until that survey amount is submitted to Environmental Health. And that five-day turnaround is based on when all this information has been submitted to Environmental Health. So we were asked to come up with ways we might can improve things, and this is one that was recommended, and the fee was approved during the budgetary process. Corey's here, if you have any questions for him.
Okay, thank you. Do I have any questions?
I make a motion for a recommendation of Environment Health.
A second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion so carries. Thank you. Let's see, we're moving on to item E, which is Ivanhoe Water System. We have our Dewberry Engineers.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Emma Leggio. I work with Dewberry Engineers, and I'm here today to request that the board approve Ivanhoe Water System Change Order Number Four. This change order will include Schedule C, D, and E from the original project, which includes Harrell's Highway One towards Garland, East Second Street in Garland, and a parallel eight-inch line along Harrell's Highway Two, which is coming from south to north from the booster pump station towards Lisbon Bridge Road. This would complete the original project scope proposed for the Ivanhoe Water Domain Sanctions Project and would increase the construction contract price from $10,344,294.50 to $12,3849.22, which is an increase of $1,659,554.72. Are there any questions?
Do I have any questions?
This project is going to be completed along with the Ivanhoe project.
Correct. This is a part of the original project scope that was approved by D W I when the project was initially proposed.
Can you follow the question?
I make a motion that we approve the changes.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion so carries. Thank you. Project finished. Mr. Turnson, if you'll come back up, please, Public Works Director.
Sampson County has recently made infrastructure improvements in the Roseboro area. We added new 125,000-gallon tank and booster pump station. To get you more in-depth, why we did this was because between Roseboro and Ultraville, we were having a pressure issue with the residents there. State requires us to keep at least 20 PSI on our water main. We were struggling to keep that with the residents between Ultraville and Roseboro. So that's why we did the infrastructure upgrade. Once this infrastructure was put into service, it caused an adverse reaction with the tank in Ultraville. Due to a high pressure to think in Ultraville overflowed. The solution for this would include adding an electronic valve to the tank in Ultraville as well as updating our existing SCADA to communicate with the Ultraville tank. The estimate cost of this solution would be between $50,000 and $75,000. Due to Ultraville's aging infrastructure and limited resources, we propose Sampson County covers 75% of the cost and the town of Ultraville covering 25% of the cost. This is the best option for all parties in order to move forward. My recommendation is a motion to approve not to exceed a price of $75,000 so that work can commence as soon as possible, and most to authorize staff to provide a contract to the town of Ultraville, which outlines that the town of Ultraville will be responsible for service on SCADA, maintaining the electronic valve and any other maintenance that must take place after the regional scope of the work. In other words, once we put it in, it'll be Ultraville's responsibility to keep it up.
Okay.
I need y'all's approval for this.
Do I have any questions?
I make a motion, we approved the expenditure to put the valve to control the amount of water we're selling to Ultraville.
Second. All those in favor? That motion so carries. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we also need a motion to adopt the associated resolution for that.
Yep, I saw that. So now I'm looking to a motion to adopt the associated resolution between the county and Ultraville. Is that correct?
So moved.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion so carries. All right, at this time, we're going to move on into public comments. Mr. Poselman, you are first, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, let's get it going. First of all, you all know why I'm here. Nothing has changed. My stance is still the same and will continue to be until some things are implemented. I have reached out to the chairman since last month, since I spoke briefly with Commissioner Gobbin before tonight's meeting. I have parents, I have some here this evening who are willing and ready and able to sit and speak with your DSS Director, the Commissioner who sits on that particular board. I have no idea when these meetings are. I've went to the website. I don't see them. I know we can attend them and speak at them, but don't have any idea when they occur. So I inform my Commissioner that I'm trying to be as diplomatic as possible with the things that are happening, but to not get feedback when I reach out, that's something that's totally asinine. So with that being said, I see on the consent agenda, I don't think it was approved this year, at least I didn't hear it, it may have slipped by me, that you all have attempted to renew the contract with Warwick and Bradshaw. I mentioned it last year about that contract at a meeting. You can go back to the archives and see that he's had this contract for up to 10 years now. Don't know what the dynamics are, how someone else can get bid for this contract. I don't know if it's, pardon my expression, a good old board system or the clicks or what have you. I don't know what it is, but it needs to be looked at. I assume you all have gotten the paper that I sent to my Commissioner, and I asked him to pass it on to you all. You all do know that Mr. Bradshaw is under investigation with the state bar. He's been that way for two and a half years by doing unscrupulous activities, and he's continued to do so, but you all, whether knowingly or unknowingly, have allowed him to still receive this contract. And so I'm asking for accountability. I've been asking for accountability. That's all I'm asking for is accountability. I'm attempting to be as diplomatic as possible. If your children were in situations that these families have been under duress from the director, I mentioned last year when the new director was in St. Paul, I said nothing was going to change, nothing has changed. When is somebody going to step up and do something about the situation that is happening and it continues to happen and evolve? All I'm asking for is accountability. That's a simple word, but it comes, if you accept this position, it comes with a level of accountability. So with that being said, then you hold others to be accountable, and that's all we're asking for. We bring these situations to you. Let's do something about it. I'm reaching across the table. Let's meet. It's in your corner now. Thank you, y'all. Have a blessed evening.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Muntz?
Good evening. I'm here to speak about a topic that's deeply personal to me and painfully true. The corruption, the negligence, and the heartlessness of the Department of Social Services and the local government that enables it. The truth is, DSS has no real intentions of reuniting families. They tear families apart, and they know exactly what they're doing. Workers lie under oath, fabricate reports, and when they're caught, instead of being held accountable, they're rewarded with promotions. In the last few months of my mother's life, a woman battling breast cancer, she was only allowed to see her great-grandchild twice a month, twice. My mother passed without the chance to make those memories or feel the joy of her great-granddaughter's laugh. That time cannot be returned. DSS workers, lawyers, and those in positions of power, they allow and they know what's happening, yet they zip their lips, sit on their hands, and they look the other way because it doesn't affect them personally. That silence makes them just as guilty. There's a supervisor at DSS who went through a terrible situation. Her own spouse was found guilty of despicable crimes. She was shown grace and allowed to move forward with her children. Well, you would think a personal experience would give her empathy, but instead, the experience, it gave her armor, and now she helps destroy other families freely skating through a system that protects its own. People like her prove DSS isn't just broken, it's morally bankrupt. They say you're only a child once. Well, that's exactly what DSS is destroying, childhood, families, and futures, all to meet their own agendas. I'm not asking you to imagine walking in another person's shoes. I'm asking you to actually walk their path, feel their pain, feel their fear and their loss. Many in this room worry about budgets and numbers, but let me remind you, honesty, it doesn't cost anything. To quote boys in the hood, either they don't know, they don't show, or they don't care. Well, I believe you do know. And if you do know, and you choose silence still, you are worse than those who commit the offense. It is time to stop ignoring this. Families are suffering, children are paying the price, and every day that you stay silent, you become the problem. I would like to say that I wish that you have the same mercy and sympathy that these families are given and that you all had the night that you deserve.
Oh, I have copies for you. Who would like to receive them?
Ms. Elaine Hunt?
My name is Elaine Hunt. I reside at 7171 O'Warsall Road, Turkey, North Carolina. And I'm up here, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Mark Turlaton, and I'm mirroring back what I think I heard him say, that a grant had been approved for Old Warsall Road. And we thank him and the EPA staff, and we know it's going to be a process. We realize that, but we thank you for what has been told to us on this evening. One question I have for some of the residents that live in my area, and this one that's on the list to speak, but I'm asking the question for her. The water that has been supplied to the ones that have PFOS, will that be continued, and how long will that be continued, recognizing that this project is going to take a while before it's completed, even before, I mean, having gotten started? But how long will they be able to receive the water, if you know?
I don't, but we'll get back with you on that. I'll have Mark look into it. He's nodding at me. I know we're good. He'll send something out on that for you, and that way I know it'll make y'all feel better about what's going on with the water. I appreciate it.
All right, and thank you again.
Thank you. Ms. Sellers, are you good? Are you going to speak? I noticed you said that you were going to speak. We're good? Okay. All right. I think we're fine, and at this time, then, we're going to move on to our county manager's comments.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to keep this brief. Do want to follow up about the federal government shutdown and the effects to the Supplemental Nutrition Assistant Program, or SNAP as we know it, as well as WIC. Assistant Program, or SNAP as we know it, as well as WIC. This was an ever-developing situation today. We kept getting various updates. Finally, around mid-afternoon, from the state level, here's what we're hearing related to the SNAP program. They stated that the Trump administration says it will restart SNAP food benefits, but that it will pay out only half the amount people normally get. The administration says it will use money from an agriculture department contingency fund. The $5 billion in that fund falls well short of the full cost of SNAP benefits, eight, which is $8 billion each month. In a court filing, officials said depleting that fund means no funds will remain for new SNAP applicants certified in November disaster assistance or as a cushion against the potential catastrophic consequences of shutting down SNAP entirely. And then next, as far as the WIC program, it was stated that we are pleased to inform you that funding has been secured to support the continued operation of the Women, Infants, and Children, or WIC program through November 30. The state has agreed to fill any gaps in funding through the end of the month. Please continue program operations as usual. So we know how very critical and important this is to a certain segment of our citizens, so we're glad to have at least heard some positive information today as far as at least working towards a resolution. And we'll continue to hope that that gets straightened out soon. Wanna just give you a quick update on the Planning and Inspections Department. We have started interviews for the planning director, and I will certainly keep the board posted about how that goes. The interviews went pretty well, and I will tell you that, for the most part, the department is stabilized at the moment. I do ask for everyone's patience with the department as, you know, we are transitioning quite a bit and working through a lot. The very positive thing that's occurring is our interim director, who is here through mid- carolina. She's going, as of this week, as of today, she's going to three days a week as opposed to the two days a week she's been working. So I think that will help bridge the gap as well. I wanted to share with you, if I can find my information real quick, where did I put it? I can't find the paperwork, but we have started, just to make the board aware, we have a telematics and fleet maintenance pilot program that we have put into place. We are starting with Public Works and with the Transportation Department, and that will, this was, as you know, approved in the last budget process. And in other words, you had a lot of conversation about that, as well as goals about better asset management, better asset tracking. So we're working towards that with these GPS devices, and obviously, they'll tell us lots of data about the vehicles to include, you know, driving habits, if particularly they're undesirable, we'll receive those type of notifications. But basically, this is something, not only are we protecting our assets and being very efficient, more efficient with what we have, but it has the potential to help lessen our insurance premiums too. And so we'll keep you posted as that develops. This pilot program will take us through for these two departments to the end of this budget year. We'll report back to you how that goes, as well as using that information to create a policy to ask the board to approve that policy. So I wanted to share that with you. I'd like to mention that unfortunately, we have lost a couple of employees this past month, a couple of different departments, and I will not call any names, but you know who they are, and we just wanna make sure that we lift those families in prayer. Very sorry about the loss, and we're certainly appreciative for what those employees did for Sampson County and our citizens. We're grateful for that. A couple of information-type items. First of all, it was shared with me this afternoon that the Pondberry Grand Opening, which is the Mountains to Sea Trail, that grand opening, which is on Straw Den Lane in Roseboro, will occur on Friday, November 21st, from 10 to 11:30. And this is a grand opening for a section of the Mountains to Sea Trail in Sampson County that we have been in, I understand our Parks and Rec Department has been in partnership related to this for quite some time. So that's very exciting. Do wanna mention as far as upcoming holidays. Of course, we have Veterans Day coming up on November 11th, and with that in mind, I understand that we have a Veterans Day celebration at the Expo Center on November 11th. And I do not have details, so we'll have to look to our website for more details about that. And so we certainly appreciate that event and the significance and importance of that. And beyond that, we have our upcoming Thanksgiving holidays from the 26th through the 28th. And of course, for Veterans Day and those days of Thanksgiving, the county will be closed for business. So I just wanna remind everyone of that, and knowing we will not meet again until December, certainly wanna wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving this month. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have any more commissioner comments?
I just have one. Mr. Van, I was certainly glad you brought up the fact about the SNAP program so that our families would know that they're in line to get some. It's not gonna be everything that they were getting, but something is better than nothing. So we certainly appreciate that fact. And reporting on Sampson County Schools, I'm gonna call Ms. Dr. King up to explain about the celebration that we need to offer them for their accomplishments. One is that Sampson County Schools, all students are graduating than ever before. Now, that's something for us to be proud of because we need our children, boys and girls, to graduate from high school. Dr. King, come on up here and tell us about.
I was told to be really quick, so I'm gonna be really quick, but y'all know I get really excited when I get to talk about Sampson County Schools. So thank you, Ms. Lee, for having us. Just some good data for you real quick. In Sampson County Schools, we just released our data from last school year. You know, we kinda released it late from the '24-'25 school year, but math in grades three through eight increased by 3.7 percentage points. When we talk about student performance, typically, anything above two is considered a significant increase. So significant increases in math. Also, in reading, in grades three through eight, we increased by 2.3 points. Two points that I'm most proud of. We did all of that while our free and reduced lunch rates increased by 16%. So as you all know, our demographics in Sampson County are drastically changing. In 2023, our schools had 53% of our students that had received free and reduced lunch. This past year, we were at 69%. So we've increased student performance, all while we have more families who are seeing struggles at home. The statistic that I am most proud of, though, is our increased graduation rates, the Nissalees shared. We have gone up to 87% graduation rate, which is a five percentage point increase in two years, which is just a huge accolade to all of our teachers. When I talk about data points, I'll always talk about graduation rates. It's the only data chart that hangs in my office because it is accumulation, right? That is the cumulative effect of all of our teachers, all of our teachers, all of our staff members, right? All of our parents who really pour into kids and what they need. And so just a huge kudos to graduation rates and what we're doing. We still have some work in science. Science, the state changed science standards last year, so our teachers are still learning new standards. We have some work to do in science, but all ELA increased, all math increased in elementary and middle school, and then graduation rate is, again, our highest that we've seen. We cannot find any time in Sampson County Schools that we were above 87%. It may be before we have some data, so definitely the highest that we have seen, at least in what we're gonna call modern times, in Sampson County Schools. So thank you so much, Ms. Lee, for just giving me a second to share.
And thank you.
Thank you all.
Anything down there, again?
No, sir.
Okay, you're good.
Mr. Chairman.
Before we go into closed session, I want to inform everyone again that during closed session, we're still in session. So if we get up and leave, I don't want everybody to feel bad or whatever. We are still in session, and we will be leaving and going to proceed to do business for the county, just to remind everyone of that. So I don't want everybody to get upset with us, but that's just the way things are.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we go into closed session per general statute, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A1 and A6, Confidential Information and Personnel Matters.
All those, and I got a second. We're in closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we go into closed session per General Stat- North Carolina General Statute 143-318 dot 11 A1 and A6, Confidential Information and Personnel Matters.
Oh, those folks, now I got a second. We're in closed session.
Entertainer motion come on to closed session.
So moves.
Motion second everybody's in, everybody raise their hand, right closed session now.
Mr. Chairman making motion to adjourn.
Second.
Hold y'all quick, where adjourn?